Hello, everybody. My name is Sarah Bryden. I am the Chair of the Finance Operations and Personnel Committee for the Portland Maine Board of Education. Welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting and Budget Review Session. It is March 20th at 4:33 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. To sort of set out the landscape for what we're going to do in this meeting, we're going to start with public comment for folks that are in the room or also joining online. To the extent that we have a lot of people who would like to give public comment, we're going to alternate between those two opportunities. A couple of reminders about public comment for everybody. Public comment is an opportunity to voice comments and voice thoughts, but the board is not going to respond to comments. We'd ask that people who are in the room also refrain from responding positively or negatively. No complaints or allegations will be allowed in public concerning any staff member or person associated with the school district. If you would like to give public comment, please come forward to the podium, or if you're adjoining remotely, please raise your hand in Zoom. We'd ask that you would introduce yourself with your name and address. You'll have three minutes. I will keep the time. When you have reached two and a half minutes, I'll raise a yellow folder, letting you know you have 30 seconds left. And at the end of the total three minutes, I'll raise a red folder, signifying the end of your time. If you're at the end of your time and you would like a little bit of additional time, let me know. So I'm going to open up for public comment. Do we have anybody on Zoom that is raising their hand?
Not currently.
Okay. Do we have anybody in the room who would like to come up to the podium and give public comment? One last call for Zoom hands. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And now I'm going to turn the next part of the meeting over to the superintendents to present content for us, after which point members of the Finance Committee and also board members who are not members of the Finance Committee can engage in questions.
Great. Thank you, Member Bryden. And Director of Budget Miranda Fasulo is just joining us up here. So good evening or good afternoon, everyone. It's great to have the sun out. I'm Malia Nally, Co-Interim Superintendent, and I am going to explain what we're going to do here, but I'm joined by Erin Townsend, the other superintendent, and Miranda to talk through what we're doing this evening. So during the last committee meeting, the board members shared their initial impressions of the budget that we presented and asked several questions. And so during that meeting, we took note of all those questions, categorized them, and tonight, we're going to step you through our answers to those questions. So specifically, we'll talk about multi-year planning. We'll address questions pertaining to class size. Then we'll get into a little bit more of the context around the special education out-of-district costs, our grants, which several people had questions about, and other potential reductions or other reductions that are proposed in the budget. As a note, we have a board meeting tomorrow evening, and at the end of that board meeting, we're going to do a board workshop around the budget. And specifically, we'll be talking about the long-term budget strategy, since ESRF is a key part of our strategy, and understandably, board members want to think about the choices we're making this year and how that impacts future years. So we'll go deeper into that tomorrow night. And we're also going to talk about the finance and HR structure. That was another question people had about the ads being proposed, and we thought that was good for a board workshop because it's something that a lot of people have questions about and wanted to get into. So if you don't see as much of that showing up here in committee meeting, just know that that's coming up tomorrow night. And then in terms of our approach, these are answers to your questions. So what we thought we could do is go through and answer all of them before getting more questions on your questions. And then we can kind of, so take note of things that come up as you go, but hopefully, we can kind of step through the answers we've collected so far. And then as we orient to this, in our minds, we're thinking about sort of the distinction between what's, you know, just interesting to know about versus what do you need to know to help you make decisions about the size of the budget and what's in the budget. And so just thinking about that distinction for yourselves, like as you're, so it helps us answer the questions, like how is this going to help you with your decision-making? And there's another element of it that we're cognizant of too, which is, you know, being able to represent the budget to the public and your constituents. So that was the other kind of orientation we were thinking about for you all. So we'll get into this and then see what else comes up at the end. Does that sound okay? Great. So I think Miranda's going to start us off with what she pulled together pertaining to your questions around multi-year planning. So Miranda.
Here we go. All right. So there's a few different variables that I think are particularly key in terms of considering our outlook for the next.
Miranda, can you speak a little closer to the microphone? It sounds like.
Okay. It's on. So yes.
Yeah, there you go.
There were several, there are several key variables really in terms of what we need to look at to be able to plan our budget for the next few years. And specifically, what we're going to cover, these are things that you guys brought up, but we probably would have covered them anyway because they're pretty critical, is state funding and debt service, and then also our fund balances slash reserves. So I'm going to hit each of these separately, and we're going to start with state funding. All right. So Portland's 2023 state equalized valuation is up $2.7 billion, or 22% over FY '22. So the FY '23, or the 2023, I should say, SEV, as it's called, does not presently influence our state funding. It's the, I'll get to a slide later that'll show you exactly how that's calculated, but that isn't actually part of the equation yet. So the fact that it is going up so significantly is definitively going to impact our state funding for next year. So it was a bit of an alarming jump in that particular variable. So the largest previous jump was $1 billion, or only 8.5%, and you know what's been happening to our state funding even with those types of increases. So it's a very significant increase. So PPS loss, $2.4 million, and state funding for FY '24, as we all know. Excluding a one-time debt service adjustment that was part of that funding, along with the extra 350 or so that we received in bus funding, the loss to core funding was actually closer to $3.8 million. So without a material change to the way funding is done, which we have, you know, maybe hopes, but no reason to think anything is going to change in terms of the state funding formula, we will almost certainly lose that much or more in FY '25. With a valuation jump this significant, I think there's a good chance that we'll become a minimum receiver of state funding as of next year, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. The good thing about minimum receiver status is at least it sets a floor to our funding losses. And that floor, I'm projecting as being between a loss of $5 or $6 million next year. So that's essentially what we can think of as a worst-case scenario. And minimum receiver status would, of course, represent a major loss next year, but in some ways, the silver lining would be that it would serve to stabilize our state funding levels thereafter because we would not be subject to these future losses, you know, based on our valuation moving forward because the way that minimum receiver status calculates our state funding is completely different and has nothing to do with valuation. So I'll get into the details of all that, but that's just about the overview there. So just to kind of restate what I've said a few different times, but you know, it's useful every time we talk about state funding to recall. The state funding formula consists of two main parts. It's the operating allocation and the local contribution. So the operating allocation is the state's calculation of the resources required to provide an education in a given district. That's the state's calculation. And then the local contribution is the amount of the district's own resources that should contribute to the cost of education, at least according to the state. So the actual state subsidy is determined by taking the operating allocation and subtracting what the state believes the local contribution should be. The operating allocation is driven by various things: enrollment demographics, administrative and personnel costs, various changes to the formula year over year. And as I've said many times, the key drivers of the local contribution, which is what is challenging for us right now, is the property tax valuation. The rapidly rising property tax valuation is causing our funding to go down. Our local contribution goes up, our funding goes down. And then the mil rate is the other determinant of the local contribution, and that's set by the state and applies to all districts. So just to recap of what we saw this year, this is a summary of our current ED279, or I shouldn't say current, it's for FY '24, so for next year. So just to recap, because we've seen this before, the first line in gray there, our total operating allocation, you can see went up by about $5.4 million. But despite that, we still lost state subsidy because our local contribution also went up and went up more than that. It went up by $7.8 million. So we lost about $2.4 million in total subsidy. And you can also see there, which I don't think I've talked about too much previously, that the debt service adjustment that I'm talking about, it was related to the fact that we paid for some debt service with unused bond proceeds. The state reduced our funding in accordance with that for last year. So they basically, that was all adjusted last year. So they essentially kind of put it back in our funding for this year. So you can see $1.1 million of our funding for this year is an increase in debt service. So that's what I mean when I say that actually our core funding, excluding that debt service adjustment, actually, we would have been down, you know, 3.4 otherwise. And then our bus funding is in here as well, and that's about $350,000. So our core funding is really down more than this 2.4. It's down closer to 3.8. So that's the impact of the rising valuation year-over-year. Okay. So this is the calculation of the EPS valuation, which is driven by the state equalized valuation that I was referencing. So in FY '24, the calculation was the EPS calculation of $11.3 billion there in the 2024 line. That was a combination of 2022, 2021, and 2020 state equalized valuations. Now for FY '25, looking forward, it'll be an average of 2023, 2022, and 2021. And you can see that 2023 figure in the box there of $14.8 billion is absolutely gigantic compared to the numbers that it's been moving in the past. Even though it's been increasing extremely rapidly, that is a much bigger jump than we've seen before, which is concerning, to say the least, for our funding for next year. And then the EPS valuation calculated as a result of that is that $12.8 billion that you see highlighted in the EPS valuation column. So that, we know what our, you know, valuation will be for the funding formula next year. We have that information. That's good. So we can plan around that. But it's not good news in terms of our actual funding. All right. So to come together in terms of what this, what this means, I've sort of alluded to it already. But let me just walk you, orient you to what you're looking at in this slide, and then we can go through a few different scenarios in terms of what we might be looking at next year. So everything above the gray line is our actual EPS subsidy. So it's just historical for 2019 through 2024. And you can see the latest, you know, the bottom line there, 2024. It's just a recap of what I've already said. We lost $2.4 million in our subsidy this year over in the change column. So we're looking at fiscal year, operating allocation in that sort of peach-colored column. And then the green column is the EPS valuation times the mil rate, which equals that EPS local expectation. So the EPS subsidy is then calculated by taking the operating allocation minus the local expectation. And that comes to our subsidy over in the subsidy column and in the change column next to it. So in terms of the scenarios, these are the lines you're seeing below the gray. Scenario one is basically holding all else equal, all other variables. So the EPS operating allocation, I'm just holding that constant, what it is for 2024. Let's say it stays the same in 2025. And I'm holding the mil rate constant there as well. So really, I'm just trying to highlight in that first scenario exactly how much that valuation drives down our subsidy. So the valuation change alone drives our subsidy down by $10.4 million. If we didn't have a floor, if there was no minimum receiver statute or whatever it is in the calculation of the subsidy, that's potentially how much we would lose driven, you know, all else equal, just driven by the valuation. So the good news is that that is not a scenario that's going to occur because of the minimum receiver, the minimum receiver statute. Scenario two, I basically have increased the allocation by a similar percentage to how much it increased this year. So it was a pretty substantial increase. I can't remember exactly what the percentage was. Somewhere in the ballpark of 4%. And then, you know, subtract the valuation calculation from that. So that's a little bit better, but we still lose $6.2 million. So even in a scenario where we get a pretty good increase to our allocation, we still have such a decrease as a result of the valuation that I still think it's very likely that the minimum receiver scenario is going to come into play. So the most favorable thing that could possibly happen is, you know, we get more allocation, and the mil rate goes down. So in this scenario, scenario three, I'm increasing the allocation by a similar percentage as to what happened this year or for FY '24, and I'm dropping the mil rate from 7.29 to 7.09. You know, I don't have any reason to think that is or is not going to happen. I just don't know at this point. But if it did, you know, that's the circumstance where it's possible that, you know, minimum receiver doesn't come into play next year. So it's possible. We could do better. So this is why I basically feel it's likely that we're going to hit the minimum receiver next year because really, it has to be quite favorable in all different inputs in order for us to do better than that. So the minimum receiver scenario, basically, the way, once you become a minimum receiver, the way our EPS would be calculated is our special ed allocation times 50%. So half of our special ed allocation plus the items that are on the back page of the ED279. It's the next to back page. I think it's page four where it has, it's basically just our CTE allocation, and there's like a regional adjustment of $180,000 or so that we would retain on top of the special education allocation. So completely different, calculated completely differently. And that is what our state funding would be based on, you know. Henceforth, until or unless something changed that bumped us out of that status, valuation would no longer be in play. And I am projecting here, based on expected special ed expenditures, but I don't know what that number would be yet. That's based on, so our FY '25 funding would be based on actual expenditures in FY '23 because it's two years trailing is basically how they calculate EPS. They base it on expenditures two years prior to the funding year. So we have 2022 expenditures informing our FY '24 funding. Next year, FY '23 expenditures would inform our FY '25 funding. You know, we're not done the year yet, so I don't know what those are, but that's a projection. So. And in that case, we receive 13.4-ish, again, just a projection, very preliminary, obviously. And that's a loss of $5.7 or $5.8 million. So it's concerning, but at the same time, it's good that there is a floor out there. Right. So anyway, yes.
Miranda, can you speak just in terms of the minimum receivership that, so like if our enrollment changes, et cetera, can you just explain, still get the same?
The enrollment, I mean, to the extent we're spending more on special ed students, then, you know, two years later, we would receive more funding in accordance with that. But enrollment doesn't play into the calculation at all anymore in terms of an input to this formula.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people understand that.
Thank you. I know we're not taking questions, but so, continue?
Yeah, continue.
I'm shifting gears here to totally different topic: debt service. So the other, another critical input in terms of the kind of volatility of certain things over the next few years, our debt service is sort of all over the map as well in terms of increases and decreases. Since FY '22, moving into FY '27, which is that wonderful year where the pension obligation bonds are retired and we see an actual reduction in our debt service. So the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in our debt service, including 2024. We've seen the largest increase so far due to BFOF debt service rolling onto our budget. So when I, you know, say that, I mean, the cost of these school building projects, debt is issued, and now we're paying it back over time. FY '25, the projection is for an increase of approximately $1.7 million, again, driven by the final issuance of our BFOF debt. And in FY '26, we actually see a slight reduction. And that's due to, you know, debt service rolling off and the debt service schedules that we know about at this point in time. And then in FY '27, we see a substantial reduction to our debt service as a result of the retirement of pension obligation bonds that I think most folks are aware of, but that's, you know, citywide. Citywide, and the city will see savings at that time as well. So numbers kind of all over the map here. So moving into the final section, which is around our fund balances and reserves. So just, I'll start out by saying, I know that the terminology can be confusing. So in general, I tend to use fund balance and reserve sort of interchangeably. But more technically, the word reserve in our context tends to mean funds set aside for specific use. So the debt service reserve, that's what it's called. And a lot of the times where we actually transfer funds into a specific designated reserve, that also, those funds no longer count toward, count as unassigned, and they no longer apply to various caps that are in place in terms of how much fund balance we can have. And that is true for the debt service reserve. So we ended FY '22 with about $13.6 million in local fund balances. Just to be clear, today, I'm not really talking about adult ed or food services just because I think we're really focused on kind of the volatile factors in the local budget. Both adult ed and food services are in a good position with their fund balances, and we can talk about them another time, but I haven't included them in this presentation today. Current projections suggest we will add approximately $500,000 to that fund balance figure of $13.6 this year, so ending with about $14.1 million in our fund balances. The FY '24 recommended budget proposes $3.6 million in use of fund balance, which is an increase of $1.6 million over FY '23 budgeted levels of use of fund balance. The increase of $1.6 million is comprised of $540,000 for one-time purchases that we've discussed, school buses and IT devices, and an additional $1 million in the use of debt service reserve. So the use of debt service reserve aims to moderate the year-over-year increase in BFO debt service rolling onto the budget annually. So those figures that you saw, trying to moderate those. And just so you're aware, the other factor playing into some of our decision-making is the fact that unassigned fund balance is capped presently at 9%. That's through FY '25, and then it drops to 5%. And it was previously, prior to COVID, it was 3% and had been that way for quite some time. And the planned use of fund balance for debt service at this point in time, as proposed in the superintendent's recommended budget, takes this cap reduction into account. And I'll show how that is and why in the next slide. All right. So basically, just putting the numbers to what I just said on that last slide, walk through this. We have essentially four different fund balances or four different, I don't know, types of fund balance in our local budget at this point. We have the unassigned. We have an IT restricted balance, about $300,000. We have a CTE restricted, which is a statute, again, that recently made it required for us to, any amount that we spend on CTE that's less than what was in our ED279, the difference there has to actually be categorized and used only for CTE in the future. And that's what that is. And then we have the debt service reserve. So the balance, first column there, shows you the balance at FY '22 year-end. It's about $13.6. We budgeted $2.035 million for FY '23. And not only are we not at this point expected to utilize those, to utilize that budget, we're actually, I believe, going to add to that at the end of this year. So there's a couple of reasons why that is, and we've discussed some of this at previous Finance Committee meetings. But we have, again, the hall/row, it was called hall at the time of the construction, debt service that was budgeted this year but was instead paid out of unused bond proceeds. So that's going to be a leftover in the budget this year. So essentially, that makes it so we do not have to spend that debt service reserve, and then we can add another $500,000 or so to unassigned because of that surplus. And additionally, we have the custodians who are presently budgeted and local but being charged to ESRF II for one more year. So these are surpluses that, that is a surplus that we, you know, kind of by design, expected to have. So those are the key reasons. But this is all based on my projections to date, which were shared at a prior Finance Committee meeting. So, all right. So then, with taking all that into account, the projected fund balance at the end of this year at this point in time, with the information I have today, is about $14.1 million. And then the next column, FY '24 recommended budget, shows you how much we've budgeted in each of these categories for FY '24. That's $3.6 million that I referenced. The buses are in unassigned, and then we have the IT purchase. There's a slight adjustment to CTE, and then we have the increase to the debt service reserve. And then if all of that was actually utilized over the course of FY '24, then that last column shows you what our fund balances would be at the end of FY '24. So underneath that, underneath the gray line, I'm showing essentially how far in excess of the 5% cap we are. And the reason I'm showing that is because that cap is going from nine to five at the end of FY '25. So it's interesting to kind of know how much over that we are because that's really fund balance that we actually need to utilize over the next couple of years. So it comes out to about $2.3 million. Whether you calculate it on FY '22 or FY '23, it's in the ballpark of about $2.3 million in excess of that 5% cap, which is fine because the cap is 9%, but we'll need to make use of that over the next couple of years. All right. So then, my final slide is really showing kind of the basis for our proposition to increase the debt service reserve utilization by $1 million. So again, the intention here was to moderate the debt service increase that we're seeing over the next few years. That's shown on your screen in yellow, so the net increase to budget for debt service. The way that the fund balance usage is shown here, which is kind of, you know, it's not really shown elsewhere. It's not an adopted plan of it. It's just really the behind-the-scenes analysis of where that proposition came from. You can see we'd be hovering about $1 million a year for FY '24, FY '25, FY '26 in increases to our debt service, rather than going, you know, 2.2, 1.7, and then dropping by $162,000. So that's the intention there, is to utilize and utilize our reserves to kind of make it a slower and even increase year-over-year. And then we still have a precipitous drop, which is great, in FY '27. We don't have enough in reserves to fully moderate this. You know, we would need more to make that, you know, zero at the end and reduce the numbers in front of it. But this is the best we can do with kind of what we have at the moment. But I do want to make sure it's clear up at the top. I am, in looking at these figures, I essentially plan to utilize that excess over 5% in this plan, right? So the amount that we have available for, in this debt service reserve, as indicated in the first column here at the top, is the amount of debt service that we have budgeted for this year that we don't need to use, the amount we had in balance before then, and then also repurposing that 5% excess to put toward this debt service plan for the next few years. So that's where that $5.7 million is coming in available. And then you can see the planned usage over the next few years and how it kind of moderates our debt service increases year-over-year. Okay, that was intense. All right. Next, we have class size?
Yeah, I think I'll start that. Yeah.
Okay.
So for this class size section, there is two parts to it. One is around the research pertaining to class size, and then Erin's going to speak a little bit to facilities usage and what's even feasible. This is where my glasses come into play. I don't have my reading glasses with me today situation. So I think a few things to say. So I think a few things to say, I will note that in board docs, we did include just like a two-pager word document that has hyperlinks to some of the research, if you want to look into it more. But the, the big takeaways are that there are benefits to lowering class size for the early grades only, so K through three. But that the side, size needs to be reduced significantly to realize the benefits. And so the size of the classes would have to be between 13 and 17. And so reducing it partially really will cost you money, but not get you any impact. And so, you know, our perspective right now is that it seems untenable and that the marginal tinkering isn't sort of worth the return on investment. There's other influences that are worth focusing on. And so we have Hattie's meta-analysis in there that you can kind of look around at. I love looking at that. And so a lot of the strategies that are reflected there are things that are aligned to our Portland promise. You hear us talk about collective efficacy a lot. That's the number two, kind of side, effect size, if you will, of anything as it pertains to student achievement. Also, just important to note out that if you look at our class sizes, if you consider how many additional people we have, ESAL teachers, special educators, ed techs, BHPs, you know, we would have a much lower student-to-teacher ratio. I point that out with the acknowledgement that the class size research is not about student-to-teacher ratio. It is actually about class size. I'm aware of that, but just thought it was, you know, worth noting in this context. And so I think, you know, our, our take is that if you were to advocate for lower class sizes, you should do that just in the K through three. You should only do it if you can get it way down there. And that would inevitably be very costly, so you'd have to be cutting other things. And so just being mindful of the other effect size interventions and whether or not, you know, and just that there would be trade-offs with what you're doing, if you were to focus on that and then have to cut other things that are aligned to some of those other components that have a greater effect size. In his research, it is, class size is quite low, actually. I think it's like a 0.02 or something, a very low effect size. But I need to look into this more. I think that that's because it looks at all grades rather than just carving out the K through three. But I still think the takeaway is that it's beneficial for the early grades, but only if you go way low. Not going from like 25 to 23 or 22 or something like that. So that's, I think, follow-up on that question. Again, more of that research linked in there. Just a shout out to our principal at Ocean Avenue, Dr. Stevens, because she did a lot of research on this. And so she's actually presented to the school board in the past and pulled out some of her research in summary. And that's part of what I have linked into the document that's in board docs. And then Erin's going to talk a little bit about the facilities usage.
Yeah. First, good evening, everybody. I'll just step through, you know, a version of like how to look at our elementary class sizes. So one, you know, to Malia's point in the research, you know, focusing on elementary, I think. Yeah. So the middle school and high school isn't in here. But, you know, pre-K, pretty simply, you know, we staff to those ratios, kind of the state-funded ratios of one to sixteen. So you can see, you know, we do that very efficiently. We have more pre-K kids than, generally speaking, in our lottery than we want to serve. The exception is at Talbot, where there's both a facilities constraint for one classroom and one classroom this year that we have staffed at a lower level because of some special education needs. So have intentionally reduced some of the class sizes there because of the programmatic need for students in that class. At kindergarten, you see, you know, a range between 15 and 20. Twenty again is our limit there. So you can see we have a couple of schools that we're really monitoring for at this point in terms of we'll be monitoring enrollments to see if they begin to exceed that class size threshold. But all of them average, you know, at or below the kindergarten threshold with a district-wide average of 18 in kindergarten. As we move to grades one to three, our methodology has been staffing at, at 22 students per classroom in the grades one through three. So again, I won't step through all first grade, you know, at or below. A couple of classes, again, at Lyseth and Reiki, where currently we're at the class size cap. So monitoring those closely. In second grade, we have a few that are edging up. So Row, Longfellow and Reiki again. And so you'll see a theme of Reiki for Annaliseeth, both in these early grades being really quite full, not the only ones, but in particular. And then in third grade, see the similar distribution in some places, you know, really good small class sizes. Again, Reiki with a high number. And in that case, East End's cohort in third grade being close to the max. But across the board, you can see our average district-wide being, you know, 20 to 19 across grades one through three. And then just briefly looking at the most upper grades, four, five. Here, our class size threshold is 25 students per class. And here you can see we broadly, in fewer places are we at or close to the number. So at Row, the cohort that's moving up from third grade into fourth grade is approaching that number. But otherwise, we have some room to work with across fourth, fifth grade. And yeah, similarly at fifth grade. So our averages, even though we go to 25, are only about 20 or so there, right? In those grades, which, you know, yeah. So ultimately, you know, kind of what that means is, you know, this is a summary of the elementary schools and how many, you know, what their projected enrollment is, how many projected FTE going into next year. And beyond that, just facilities-wise. So I think kind of the headline takeaway here is our facilities and our staffing methodology are pretty well-aligned in terms of the capacity of our buildings and how many like physical classrooms we can have within our current structures. And it can form, so we, you know, have a little bit of flexibility in a couple of places. But as you saw, we have a few schools and as we do annually when we monitor enrollments, you know, and this is reflected in our budget book this year, you'll see, you know, there are a couple of post-budget adds when it exceeds that number. You know, we monitor that closely. So, so really there are a couple of available classrooms to potentially account for some of that ongoing enrollment increase in places where we would, you know, we refer to it as opening up another classroom. But we don't have much room for much more than beyond that, right? Ultimately, in terms of our current way out of our facilities. The last slide in this space is, oop, and I apologize, I forgot to update the Longfellow number. The Longfellow number is two. So I apologize. The last slide here is pertaining to Vice Chair Bondo's question. As we've been talking about the multilingual enrollments, and we've obviously, and rightly so, had a lot of focus on the number of students who are coming in. But it is well, you know, kind of beg the question of like, how many are cycling out, right? You know, particularly because of the challenges around housing and other factors. So here's a bit of a summary, you know, in terms of the number of students who've come in. How many have exited, you know, so 35 exited within the same year into this kind of distribution, right? In terms of where you've seen where they've gone. So by and large, we are kind of taking them in, right? And holding the majority of them, at least within the same school year. So we are having to accommodate right across the district for those students who are coming in.
Great.
That's the class size update.
And I'll speak a little bit to the special education out of district costs. And this was pulled from a summary that Jesse gave. It's not like really for slides, but I wanted to include all the information, so you had it available here. So just to be clear, the out-of-district placements are referring to students who attend special purpose private schools that are state-approved schools that have a specific purpose to serve students with significant disabilities. And this is separate from students who are parentally placed in private schools, just to be clear. And so a year ago, the estimate for tuition for FY twenty-three was that it would be about 1.4 million. And right now, we're looking at it's coming out at closer to 1.8. And so then looking at next year and what you see reflected in the budget that we keep speaking to is a projection of the cost at 2.7 million. So the question we heard you all ask is what's driving this? Or just can you unpack that a little bit? And so there's been this increased need for out-of-district placements. So this year of the 33 students currently placed, 14 were not part of the original projection last year. So why not? Who are those students? And so the most common reason for the new placements are that students have mental health or behavioral needs that require another level of programming that is beyond our scope. So I know we've talked, you know, about this theme of the mental and behavioral health needs across the system. And that's showing up as well at the sort of most kind of restrictive end of our service continuum, where we are seeing more students that have higher, bigger needs that ultimately are not suited for the program, our most restrictive programming in district. There's also some students who are already in out-of-district placements and then moved on to our caseloads. So somebody who might have come into our district that had that placement already. And then there are some students who potentially could have made it into our bridge or beach programs at the elementary level, but due to staffing, we didn't have capacity to serve them. As well as just a handful of kids or students, rather, who are affected by the increase in age eligibility. So we now can serve students up to 22. And so some students might be staying on that are out-of-district placements that are qualifying that way as, as far as the increase. I think I mentioned this in the committee meeting, but I think another, you know, just note to have is that there's two particular students who are attending high-cost out-of-state schools. These were determined by the state to be the responsibility of Portland based on some unexpected changes in policy. And so those are costing us $375,000 a year. And then of the 33 students in out-of-district, there are seven who may be able to return to our programs by the beginning of the next year. That would bring it down to 2.1, but there's a lot of variables. And right now, that's not at all certain. So we're obviously tracking that like we do, but, but it wouldn't be safe to not account for those funds at this point. And then just thought this would be helpful. I, I believe I kind of alluded to this in our last committee meeting. But, you know, some people understandably are asking the question, well, should we bring more students in? Or, you know, and I had mentioned, well, that's not always cheaper, if you will. And in addition, we actually have very few students out of district because we have this continuum of services within Portland. And so for just a little bit of context, you know, we have what, 6,500 plus students and only send 33 out of district. Lewiston has, you know, 1,500 kids less than us, and they send over 100 kids out of district. And then you can see, I won't read through them here, but you see these other comparison districts. Their total student enrollment as compared to how many students are sending out of district. So again, I think we're, we're pretty good in terms of really limiting this to only students that we truly can't serve with the programming we have. So I think that's how I have on out-of-district. Great. And then you're going to talk through the grants, right, Miranda?
Yes.
Great.
All right. So we had a question asked about, you know, what grants are going away that are requiring or that we proposed then be rolled into our budget proposal. So there's basically three grants that are either reducing or going away where there were positions proposed to continue into FY twenty-four by utilizing SRF three. So they were presented as part of our total budget package last week. So the first is the BAR grant. So BAR was a three-year grant. And just by way of the original grant design, the third year, which is next year, the final year, is a reduced budget. And so in order to continue this full-time position in FY twenty-four, required a proposal of funding 0.75 out of SRF three. We had two positions on title funds, so a 1.0 FTE literacy teacher leader on Title II. And also a presently, I believe it is a full-time position, the mobile maker space teacher that is on Title IV. Both of those positions were utilizing one-time carryover funds that were from projects, you know, leftover funds from projects in prior years that we weren't able to complete because of the pandemic. Those were put forth as one-time only. And in order to continue, continue those forward, we need to fund those out of SRF three. The entire literacy teacher leader was proposed as shifting to SRF three. And then just 0.3 of the mobile maker space teacher was proposed to shift to SRF three with the remainder coming from other existing continuing grant funds. And then SRF two, as you know, is also going away. We have very few positions on SRF two. There are two, two social worker positions, each funded half by SRF two. So these are actually full-time social worker positions, but just half of them were funded by SRF two. And so proposing to shift those costs onto SRF three for FY twenty-four. And then kind of out of that question, we were asked sort of in general, you know, what are our major grants? What do they fund? So I'm not going to go through the details of all this, but again, just wanted you to have the detail on these slides. We've basically broken them down into two categories. So this page shows really our core education grants that we get year-over-year, that we've been getting for years and years prior to the pandemic. So these are our core grants, the titles, local entitlement, which is special ed, and then Perkins. Those are kind of the key three. And I, I do want to mention, adult ed gets a lot of grants, and we did not include adult ed grants here. That would be a whole separate workshop and would need to be led by adult ed. But so they get a lot of grant funding, not included here as well. And then the next last page, our second page here is really some of the key pandemic-related grants. Not SRF, because we talked about SRF so much, we don't need to talk about it again here. But these are some of the other grants that have come out of the pandemic that are, you know, sizable. These are not all of our grants, of course. These are the key ones in both of these two categories, just so you all to have a, a sense of that funding that we get.
All right, we're, we're getting there, recognize this is a lot of content. So, you know, also just, you know, in the finance committee meeting last week, questions about just understanding some of the proposed local reductions. So we'll step through a couple of slides as it relates to that. So first, the proposed reductions of the community coordinator positions in, in total, that reflects, you know, a total of 3.38 FTE. And you can see here how that FTE is broken down across school sites. So, you know, essentially little bits and pieces kind of spread about. And, you know, in total, that actually represents eight individuals. So we have many individuals who work at multiple of these sites. I didn't want to reflect those individuals here, but, so it reflects eight individuals. And you can see some of their general kind of responsibilities. You know, not that everybody does the same exact thing, but in general, these are kind of, you know, the types of responsibilities that community coordinators hold. So these are things in the proposed reduction of this, in particular, volunteer screening and recruitment are things that we'll have to account for, how to take responsibility for without their support. The second was the mentoring coordinators. So we have had for a number of years, 2.75 positions, one at Deering and one at Portland, to total 1.5 FTE. In this past year, none of that FTE was going towards coordinating a mentoring program. So this felt like, you know, kind of a logical proposed reduction. One has been vacant, another was repurposed at Portland High to provide some additional counseling support, given the high number of their total enrollment this past year. So, you know, and I think just I'll say, you know, that in the, you know, continued development of other kind of student engagement, student-facing activities make it happen, other kind of co-curriculars, right? Whether, you know, I think it's a, a part of what's informing our recommendation is that we have a number of structures to help students and others engage with students that's helping to meet some of the needs. So we'd seen diminished participation kind of in these programs over time. And then lastly, Miranda, you can speak for just a moment to the across-the-board reductions.
Okay. Yep. So basically, we, you know, utilized a methodology to come up with a way for each of our departments to really scrutinize and examine their budgets. So we came up with basically a five percent reduction of non-salary. And when I say non-salary, I really mean non-position. So it does include stipends and extra pay, those types of things. Because those are, to some extent, discretionary, some departments more or less so. But it does include temp salaries and stipends. And I will also, we excluded certain things that are non-discretionary, discretionary, such as, you know, out-of-district tuition or such things from the special ed budget. So we're trying to come with, up with a way that was appropriate to kind of determine the amount of the reduction for each department and school. So that's ultimately what we came to when it comes to these amounts by type. So academics and curriculum, it's about a reduction of about 110,000. From operations departments, it'll be about 190,000. Executive admin, 40,000. The schools all told, 70,000, adult ed, 40,000, for a net total of $450,000 in reductions really to non-salary, non-salary department and school budgets.
In just, you know, I think, you know, our approach to this is going to be, you know, if this is what advances, you know, as a reduction moving forward is working with the is working with the managers in those departments, right? In terms of how to, you know, how to identify what the reductions will be. So there isn't a list of like, you know, we're not at the place yet of saying, okay, this is what's going to be the 70. You know that that's a process for us to engage with, with department managers to identify where they will make those reductions over, you know, over the course of this spring. Almost done. A couple other just slides that responding to questions. And again, you know, we're, you know, we'll pause here to certainly answer questions and have discussion. A reminder that tomorrow evening we'll be talking about kind of phase two of the multi-year planning conversation, which is now that we have a sense of kind of the core issues that we're struggling with, you know, what is some of our potential strategy and approach to manage it? And then the HR finances, Malia mentioned at the beginning. But the last couple of things, there was questions about the crossing guard contract. So, you know, this contract was held by the city until about 2015. And then, and at which point, or 2015, 2016, at which point, you know, they were having challenges with staffing. It came to PPS. We have since that time used an organization, all city management services that really, you know, kind of manages our crossing guard program, does the hiring, recruitment, all of that kind of stuff. So we've outsourced it. They were having challenges with staffing, you know, as, over the course of this past year. And so they actually came to us with requests to increase both the hourly rate as well as the amount of time to try and make the positions more desirable so that we could have crossing guards at all the places we needed them to keep kids safe. At that time, we elected not to move forward with the hourly rate increase. But we did increase the number of hours. So what you see reflected here on the side is what kind of constitutes the proposal of what's going into the budget for next year. So really this is all about, you know, trying to get them staffed, you know, as many of these, you know, kind of part-time, very part-time episodic positions can be incredibly challenging to staff. Also essential from a safety perspective for us. So, you know, I'll acknowledge, you know, certainly the rate, you know, is more than some of our internal hourly rates. But I would say it's not a one-to-one in terms of whether we are managing that internally, in terms of both the overhead that we would, you know, have to contribute to be able to manage to recruit and staff that you would be additional cost as well as the potential challenge, right? And filling those if we were going backwards in terms of the hourly rate. So that's some of the details around the crossing guard contract as was asked. And then I think the last slide for tonight for committee was a question about, okay, again, I think, you know, what would it look like if we were to kind of consider stepping backwards, right? Our proposed budget posited a 7%, you know, school side tax rate. So as you can see, you know, to get to that, we were having to already kind of reduce or not advance, you know, almost $9 million worth of activities. And as we've been saying, kind of the rough thumb thumbnail really bears out, right? If we were to move backwards to 6%, you know, that's another million plus we would have to find in the local budget. So this is an out of SRF, but right now we are, you know, our current budget has $775,000 in reductions, you know, eliminations. And 2.5, right, 2.5, 2.8 that we're moving to SRF. 2.5, yes, thank you. 2.5 that we're moving to SRF. So we'd have to find another million in our local budget and then 5% would be obviously two plus million more to get to that 5% rate. So significant reductions. All right. That is our last slide. So I'm going to stop the share. We can come back to various slides for questions as we move forward. So Chair.
Thank you so much. So I'm not seeing any hands raised among our board colleagues who are joining remotely. I'm going to look around the room and see if there are any board members that have questions. Board member Opperman, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate all the answers that you came with. As upsetting as some of them might be, you know, all in all. I guess the piece that, a couple of questions I had, I'll go back a bit. A big question, as opposed to small question, is in the, in the last slide where we're looking at the total percent. If we did not have SRF to, to get this, this year or next, this coming year, would, could you, how many millions of dollars would have to be added just to maintain what we have? And I think you said it, but I just want to hear it again.
Well, I think that's what we're going to do tomorrow night.
Okay.
So we took two and a half million out of the local budget.
And put that, so that's, that would be the two, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Roughly two and a half million then would be going, would be back. If we didn't have SRF, that two and a half million would be back in, in there, which would put us at higher than 7%.
Yes.
So the budget without SRF is closer to 10%. Okay. So we're, we're fortunate at this point that that
Yeah.
we can do that as, as requested. Okay. I just getting those pieces
Yeah.
in my head and all. Heaven's to Betsy. The, the piece on the, the research on class, I mean, class sizes, my bugaboo thing because of wanting to make sure students, and I, I appreciate the fact that it is K through three that really makes the difference. And that difference is carried on through higher years. So that if when that solid background happens, then then middle school and high school situations improve are dramatically. And you don't have, you have less catch-up, if assuming the same kids are going through the system, a big assumption at this point. So to, to, looking at, we're looking at averages on those data. And I, was it, was it 11? I don't know how far back it was. It was quite that far back. Yeah, it was, well, okay, we're, we're looking at 16, 17. 16 and 17 and the Hattie meta-analysis research was looking at 17 or less for K through three. And all. And then I don't know that you, I can answer this right now. But if K through three, I mean, pre-K is all set. They're at 16. And it looks like a lot of K may actually be under that 17, which is, which is wonderful. If we were to carry that up to three and to, and I can't, not doing the numbers in my head right now, and I don't know that you could do the numbers right now in your head either, or on paper or whatever, to figure out how many, how many stu-, how many classes would there be at, and I could probably do it home too. Well, if we were looking at 17, and I bring it up for two reasons. One is the research, which is good. The second is if we get an onslaught of kids in, and continuing onslaught of students coming in, which I don't know that it's going to slow down unless something major happens somewhere else in the world and/or in, in Washington. We'll still go over 17 with those kids anyway. So the question is, and, and I know you did this with the number of rooms, et cetera. What situation would we have if we had? How many, how many more classrooms would you need? And all. And I know you brought up the, the K, the other auxiliary staffing to the teacher of record. But again, these, these numbers are, are looking at largely the reason at that age is the, the need for the close relationship between teacher and student, particularly at that age. Not that it isn't needed at all ages, but particularly at that age. So that would be something I would find another calculation to do, if you would, please. And I, and I should stop in case one of my colleagues has raised their hand at this point.
Yes, we do have a couple of folks with raised hands and I'm actually going to go, because we're going to start with committee members. So I'm going to go to board member Figdor. Go ahead. And then after that, we're going to go to Vice Chair Bondo.
Thank you. I had a question about debt service. So just looking back at the, the slide number, I'm not sure of the number. It's page 13 of the PDF. The debt service reserve chart, the final slides in the debt service portion. I'm wondering if given that after we finish paying off the pension obligation bond, that our debt service drops so much. I'm wondering if it makes sense to spend more of the excess of our fund balance over 5% in the near term. And so, yeah, I'm just wondering the thinking on that, just looking ahead and knowing that after FY25 will be limited at the 5% and that debt service will be less of a challenge to us, knowing what we know now. Clearly we have huge facility needs. But just given what's planned so far. Yeah. So why aren't we trying to spend that down a little bit more, given that, well, that debt for services is less of a problem starting in FY27?
Yeah. So essentially the reason that we didn't propose to spend more for FY24, at least in my view, is the dire, potentially dire situation of FY25. But I do think absolutely, I mean, like I said, this, this slide is really my, you know, basis for thinking about this. There's absolutely no reason why you can't, why we couldn't make a different decision in FY25. And instead of budgeting 2.5 in the debt service reserve, you could budget the entire remaining balance. You could absolutely repurpose more than just the excess. We could repurpose, I mean, just because 5% is a cap, doesn't mean we have to maintain five. It's not a floor, it's a cap. So I think it lends itself to more of a strategic decision next year and is trying to balance the substantially large increase in debt service this year, recognizing that there's still a substantial increase in debt service next year. And potentially other really significant challenges for next year. So it's a great point. It is definitely a strategic decision and there's probably no right answer definitively, that this is what we put forth. And absolutely, there'll be more discussion about it for sure, next year especially. But yes, you could absolutely allocate more if that was a direction that you guys wanted to go. And if you wanted any specific guidance or wanted to run through any scenarios as we move forward through this process, I'd be happy to support that for you guys.
Thanks, Miranda. That, that answers my question precisely. And I feel very comfortable with the num-, you know, the use of the reserve proposed in the superintendent's budget for this year for FY24. My question was more looking ahead. So thank you. That's super helpful in looking, in thinking about FY25. Can I ask one more question or Chair Bryden, would you
Yeah, go ahead.
prefer that we moved on? I had a question about the community coordinators and just wondering, given, so I've worked very closely with the community coordinator, specifically at Reiki for many years, and understands the role that that person has played pretty, I think, pretty well. And I'm wondering how you're, you're thinking that work will be done? Who, how, yeah, how, how will the work that community coordinators currently do get accomplished and by whom, if we eliminate the positions?
Um, I mean, you know, it's a great question. I think part of the reality we're grappling with is, you know, with, you know, this fiscal landscape, we're not just going to be in a position to have other people picking up all of the work. I think the, the core one, you know, from a safety perspective that we've talked about and, you know, have a few ideas, but haven't landed an exact strategy is knowing the volunteer clearance, just so ensuring that anybody that feels fundamental, you know, anybody who's coming into our schools to volunteer, has gone through the background checks and all those kinds of things. So that is kind of a core body of work. Certainly many of these additional things that they provide to help enrich our schools are incredibly valuable. I mean, these are incredible members of our school communities, you know, and many of them longstanding members of our school community. So this is, this is a painful proposal, just to be clear. And many of the things that they do are really important resources for our students and families. And in a position where, you know, the fiscal position we're in, in terms of kind of our priorities around preserving core programming. You know, this was, you know, a potential opportunity for reduction, but it comes with, you know, costs in terms of, you know, the day-to-day school experience and some of the additional things that kind of happen that they provide. So we've brainstormed potential ideas around how to manage the volunteer screening, because see that as, you know, we can't let go of that piece, right? But the other pieces, it's, you know, it's going to be much more challenging to be able to sustain in the way that it has, that the community coordinators have been able to do.
Thanks. And just a follow-up on that, as I'm wondering specifically, and, and again, my familiar, this might reflect, my question might reflect my familiarity with our programs. But in particular, I know the community coordinator at King, where the model is an EL model, a lot of the expeditions really involve bringing the community in and the communities being, you know, very engaged in the expeditions. And in, in many cases, that's, you know, critical to the core expeditions that the schools undertaking where students are doing. I'm wondering, you know, is that, have we thought about retaining, you know, the community coordinator, specifically at King, for instance, where that person might play in even, in even, you know, a role that's really central to the model of the, of the school?
Um, I'll just say, at this point, we haven't had that conversation about, you know, distinguishing amongst the community coordinators, recognizing and, you know, obviously in terms of the FTE allocation and programmatically what you're naming in terms of, you know, in terms of support of the model. I'll recognize, you know, that CASCO has a similar model, right? Many, you know, significantly engaged with their expeditions, you know, yet, you know, without, you know, the resource. So it's stuff that the school staff owns in terms of engagement. Certainly, you know, in a world where we didn't have these kinds of constraints, it would be ideal to be able to provide that. But we have a kind of local resource that, you know, offers a little bit of a counterpoint. So at this point, we have not considered, you know, kind of differentiating amongst the reductions around community coordinators.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on. I don't know whether to say Vice Chair Bondo or Board Member Bondo, because we're in a committee meeting, but go ahead. It looks like you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation, the response. I just want, my first question was already, member Victor already asked that. So I just want to have some follow-up questions for the community coordinator. So when we have the three point 38 FDS, so those are the eight individuals, then, then we have to reduce, they're all gone. They are, they have to leave. If we are, we vote for that, so that, those are the reduction to remove those eight individuals, right? So they are gone.
Uh, generally, yes, that's true. In some cases, there are some individuals that in addition to their small fractional percent of community coordinator may hold another role. I know, for example, of one who also has a part-time ed tech role, so that is not impacted by this decision. But the community, community coordinator portion of their role, yes, would be going away.
Yeah, I just want to emphasize what member Victor, because I've been working with the community coordinator of a couple of those schools. And I know really want to look at the restorative justice that we want to accomplish on some of those middle schools and some are really overcrowded school like East End. So I know exactly are really important. So if we don't have any strategy to replace, I think we just need to look at, how to retain maybe now all the eight, but at least few of them to see how valuable the work should be done. So I just, you know, throwing that because I, if we don't have any strategy, I mean, these are, these are losses for the community, because that's a great relationship I see on the, on some of the restorative justice and walking around community and try to embrace diverse communities to come together. And I look at it and I saw it's uh diverse communities to come together. And I look at it and I saw East End have done a lot to try to bring diversity to the PTO and bring a lot of families back. So I just want to think about while we're building the student, the whole student and families in our Portland promise and what the value of the community coordinator is about. So instead of just to have the eight individuals to go, so maybe let's just strategize to see how we can retain few of them and having the key colleagues on some other school. All right. And then my second question is about the class, the the size classes. When I look at the, I think the 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 slide you just showed last time for the enrollment, I just want to have a clarification. I see we have some class uh classroom available and I look at it, what the cost of for us to add some classes are grateful from East End and Row, uh what's the cost is going to be? And when we talk about enrollment, those are included with the rising grades or just the new students who've been enrolled and sending to those schools?
Um yeah, it does include uh all enrollments. I mean, you know, all the students who came in, you know, our methodology uh was, you know, we took the current enrollments as of um, you know, mid-January. And for all of the existing grades, rolled them forward, um you know, up into the next grade. And for incoming K, we use a five-year average of kindergarten enrollments to project the kindergarten enrollment. Um in terms of your questions of um staffing those classrooms, you know, it's essentially the cost of a teacher. Um you know, at Row and at East End, um those have been schools that over the past couple of years, I'll say. Um and looking at their numbers right now, right, I would anticipate that we will need to open up one or two classrooms, right, with anticipated additional enrollments. Um you know, kind of post-budget, just as we, we have a process, you know, starting in June where we monitor weekly um what the enrollment is to be able to ensure, you know, we have the right staffing in place. And then that happens from June one through September thirtieth. And then we're actually kind of re uh re-upping that uh for a little bit of a period now, just because of trying to be strategic about all of our placements from intake. Historically, we've done it monthly, right? You know, to just be continuing monitoring enrollments, and I'm in dialogue with school leaders all the time about, you know, those kinds of issues.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my last, my uh so uh I just look at the title, you know, the grant and title that we we are, we do have right now. So I just want to know which schools are maybe losing the funding on under the Title One?
Uh wait, can you repeat the question? Who's losing title?
Yes, who's yeah, who's using any funding? Because I know East End has some findings under the Title One, and I know some of those school, right? So I just want wonder if they, if we, are we going to keep, they are keeping those findings? Or we are the way to lose some of those findings on the, on under the Title One?
I understand. Um Vice Chair Bondo, Gail Crissy, who you know is here um and oversees the title grant, so she's at the podium. She'll speak to that.
And we don't, it's not going to be a satisfying answer. We don't have our uh preliminary allocations from the state yet. They're projecting mid-April for those numbers. Um we are going to try to, again, serve all of the seven Title One schools we currently serve. Um next year, a couple of our schools will be grandfathered because of a declining poverty rate. Um but we, as long as we have the funding, we can continue to serve all seven elementary schools that we see serve this year.
All right. Thank you, Gail. Thank you so much, Gail. So my last question is on the SF three. For how long we we have to hold the SF three? Because I see some of the core programming is going to be funded somewhere under the SF three. So it's going to be just one year of funding, or we have a couple more years going with the SF?
It it's just next year up until September. Um so it's a, it's a one-year strategy.
It's one-year strategy. So and then we need to figure out how to bring them, bring them back to the local or to find some findings for them? Or are we losing those core programming?
Yeah, that's going to be our, sorry, um Nikki, the, that's the workshop tomorrow night is, how are we thinking about that? Um because that's understandably a huge question for all of you and and us as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm I'm done. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um Board Member Victor, do you have a new question? I'm not clear on whether your hand is up from before.
I do, but I'm happy to wait if others have questions.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Um I'm wondering if there have been conversations with our, I'm I'm looking to the Saras for this, to Finance Chair Bryden and um School Board Chair Lentz, whether there's been conversations uh with our state delegation, particularly looking at the FY twenty-five numbers. Um I, the numbers as um I'm sure you all are finding are incredibly alarming. Um and I think, you know, the the increase, the huge jump in the state valuation is um is just, is something we um, you know, off the charts. So I'm wondering, we've always had multiple conversations with our state delegation through the course of this process. I haven't been part of those conversations this year, so I'm just wondering if they're happening, and if not, um really encourage you to have those conversations um now and and over the course of the next year.
Yeah, I'm happy uh to respond. So I am in conversation with Representative Brennan and also kind of, you know, with the city and state. Uh I think the good news is, is that everybody seems to be recognizing what a huge issue is like coming down the pike to us. And uh I I feel like they understand the urgency for action right now, so that this can be better for next year. So those conversations are happening almost on a weekly basis uh right now. And um you know, I've been in contact with the superintendents about really figuring out where does that legislative work sit within our committees? So that it's really being held um by uh not just me, but as as our body. So um yes, the short answer is yes, those conversations are happening, and we really see that as like a a primary uh tool that we're trying to use right now as we plan for for next year.
Great. And I just encourage you to ensure that the whole delegation is aware. Um you know, we have tremendous resources such as um House Speaker Talbot Ross um and others. And so I I want to just make sure that um everyone is aware, because you know, uh um you know, Representative Brennan plays a tremendous role in education, and then there are other members who play um additional roles. And so I'm hopeful that the whole delegation understands the challenges that we're facing.
Yes, and I also think that um another thing that we've noticed is it's not just us now facing this problem. There are other municipalities that are really starting to feel the the effects of the EPS funding formula. And so there is kind of like a collaboration between other municipalities in in raising this as an issue and and advocating for action. So.
Thank you. Um Board Member Offerman, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um I going back to the the conversation about mentors and community um assistance from the uh individuals that have been on the cut list. That's a category of of activities that are not directly related to the academics per se. Are not directly related to the general social work aspects of it. Um and those are not the only areas where there's that kind of action going on. And it would be interesting to know what what I call non-core, well, it's very hard to say anything isn't core when you're talking about education, because it's it's multi- multifaceted. But the fact that there are programs that may also um provide funding for smaller class sizes if they were cut back or eliminated or something else came about and and in the larger picture. So I don't know those, because I'm not familiar with all the system. Um a few come to mind, but it would be interesting to know that. And there's another little peculiar little thing that I saw when I was looking at the the stick, the uh back, some back budgeting thing from the city. And there's a a student activity fund that's at s- in the city level. It I it's, I I was, it was, I I don't know what it it's on there when they're going down and it's a special, oh, one of those weird, one of a peculiar little fund that they have.
What what exactly?
Oh, heavens to Betsy.
I mean, I, we don't, yeah.
Student activity funds?
Wait, I'm just wondering what that has to do with something that was published by the city? So I'd like to know.
But it's a city, but what, if it's a student activity fund, where does it?
We have student activity funds um that are maintained at the schools.
Right.
But I don't know what that would be showing at the city, so that's all. I'm just not certain. There's something else that you're referring?
What I saw and I was
I mean, it's, they're small.
It was it wasn't tiny. Well, I will come back to you with that, but it's it's it, there's some, it's some spe- you know, how they have their peculiar little funds, and it's not listed under their, this is their their it's probably a two-year-old allocation thing, where they go back and talk about all where everything happened in a final way of um what are they, it's not the budget books, but it's the other thing that they have. I'm being very articulate, and I appreciate that.
Like the comprehensive annual financial report? Is that what you mean?
Yes, yes. And in there, there's this
It's in there, okay.
It's in there, and it's um if I find it right now, I'll do. But the other one, I was just interested in knowing those other groups of activities that separate from that piece.
Yeah, we could do, I, it's kind of like the youth development position, so make it happen, extended learning coordinator, so we could pull a list of those together.
And just how much that all is and what the relative, you know, impact and where things overlap and where things might, you know, uh because in the back of my mind, with the lack of staffing and the ability to meet the needs of kids, volunteers are a huge resource that we need to really almost pull together in a um say, in a militaristic way as a core, uh you know, Maricor type thing um for in the city. And in in a long-term way, in a well-developed one. So I think even that's, that's my other concern, meeting the needs of the kids. Thank you.
Of course, um I have a few questions. On the um the community coordinators, the three point eight FTEs, my apologies if this was on a slide and I didn't catch it. But um what's the dollar amount that would be corresponding to that?
I want to say a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I just want to point out that there was a typo on that slide. It's not three point eight FTE, it's three point three eight. And it should have said three point three eight last week, and it didn't. And
Okay.
So that, just clarifying that for everyone.
Three and change. Hundred seventy-five. Okay, cool. Thank you. Um okay. Uh oh, so and then my next question is also probably um something, hopefully, Miranda, that um you can answer. I hope. Um so with the uh fund balance question, in terms of um striking the right balance, in terms of how much we spend and retain and all that. I'm curious about whether the fund balance that we retain is a revenue opportunity in terms of investment, income, interest, things like that.
Um generally, no. I mean, I'd have to check with the city on how that, how they actually work that. But we don't see anything um ourselves back on that.
Oh, interesting. Okay, because I was just thinking, huh?
We don't get any?
Not at the moment.
Well, I don't think so.
Millions. If it, if they're, yeah, you know, that's a, I mean, it's a good question.
Yeah, okay.
I can, I can follow up.
Okay, super. Appreciate that. Yeah, okay. Um and then I have some questions about the class size topic, of course, because why not? Um so if we were to hypothetically, if we were to get to K through three, sixteen, seventeen kids in a classroom, um I understand that would be costly. What ballpark are we talking about in terms of cost?
I I think that's the follow-up question that um Opera, um Member Offerman asked, so we're gonna
Okay.
I mean, it's, we sometimes use seventy-five thousand per teacher as a rough estimate, but we're going to come back with um how many teachers we'd have to add, what's the cost, and how many classrooms would we need to have, and is that viable or not?
Okay.
And from a facilities perspective, I just, you know, my prediction is it's untenable. We don't have classrooms to move that level, but we'll do the analysis to show what the increase of FTE would be, what that would be per school, and if there are actually classrooms available to house those additional spaces.
Okay. Um my other question about the class size topic in general, um so and I I did um look a little bit at the research. Thank you so much for sending that. That was really, really helpful. I'm curious about, so if we were to go from like, you know, twenty-three to twenty, for example, um I understand that the data is, the data shows that that's not going to yield tremendous results. I'm curious about whether those results and is that test scores, like what sort of marginal improvement in outcomes are we talking about there?
I mean, I think we can follow up if you want to go deeper. Um I I, you know, I it, they talk about it as it pertains to student achievement, and then I think there's some around, you know, social, emotional benefits as well. But um I think it's primarily the analysis that, as far as I understand it, is about academic achievement.
Okay. And part of the reason why I'm asking that question is, I'm wondering if there are also benefits to be gained, even, so if we're not able to get to sixteen, seventeen, if we're able to um see improvements in teacher retention, um teacher satisfaction, things like that, by bringing class sizes down a little bit, I just want to make sure that that's part of the conversation, not necessarily. And therefore, we're going to take a different action, but wanted to make sure that's part of the conversation. Then, but yeah, so that's, I don't need to get more into the weeds right now. Um Board Chair Lentz, you had questions?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Um uh Miranda, the percentage cap on the fund balance, it's, is it the percentage of our budget?
Yeah, so it's just the local budget, so it wouldn't include, um you know.
Just the local budget.
The local budget. And it's, it's the balance minus what you have budgeted for the next year applied then to the budget year you're looking at. So
Okay.
Yeah, it's a percentage of the local budget.
Awesome. Thank you. Um and then the multilingual student movement. Um would it, would it be possible to see multiple years of the movement of multilingual students? Like, is the eight percent normal, high, low? Just because it seems like this year is kind of different in um in other ways. Um just to double-check, the um the mentoring coordinators are separate from Make It Happen, correct? Okay, great. Um and then the uh just one question about class size. And the way that it overlaps with our multilingual population, since the needs of our multilingual population have changed, like, does that impact the class size ratios at all? Like, is that part of the body of research or?
Not in, I don't think in that um in the sort of seminal piece of research that's actually quite old, but still is considered like the main standard. Um yeah, and we, you know, we address that through the ESOL ratios.
Okay.
Because really what's happening there is um we in, we need to be able to provide the intensive language development in addition to accessing core. So there's need for collaboration time and then um that time in the schedule for students to get the intensive language development.
Great, thank you. That was uh all my questions. Okay, great. Uh Board Member Victor, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a question about an issue, part of the budget, that is not um part of today's presentation so far. Is that all right? Or do we want to, I could um
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um it's regard, with regards to summer school and the changes to our summer program this year. And let's see, my understanding of part, I mean, clearly, part of the driver of our um change to have a um offer a less intensive summer school than we have, than we have the last two years is um is financial. But um but my understanding is it's more than that, that we're um that we concluded that um the effort might not be worth what, in terms of that, the results that we are getting. Um and that the 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 change for this year will be relying um on community partners in addition to a couple of other core programs. Um so I was surprised, um I um and I I understand from previous years that a core challenge with some of the community partners is that they um might not be as well-equipped to um address the needs of our kids um as we had hoped. Um and correct me if that's wrong, but that's my understanding in terms of um dealing with language and all sorts of the um the complexity um of our student body. So I was surprised to learn that I believe that cultivating community what is, would not be considered part of our twenty twenty-three summer programming. Um they've been running our youth growers paid summer internship for um for our high school students, where students take care of the Boyd Street Urban Farm. Boyd Street Urban Farm, which produces organic food for Kennedy Park neighbors. And they also deliver fresh produce to elders in affordable housing and do leadership development. And then it's mainly, or maybe entirely, new mainers who are participating. So I'm just trying to understand why we want to include a community partner like cultivating community that seems so aligned with a program that seems so aligned to the Portland Promise and the types of programs that were, that we would want to support. So I guess that's my first question. And then I wonder, it's raising for me, maybe I would like to see a more full accounting of who, of, of the plan for summer school funding and, and which of the community partners we're considering moving forward with this year and the ones that were not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm surprised, I, I don't think all those decisions are made yet. So we've been, what I, so what we've been waiting on is the final budget so that we can figure out what are we working with? How many slots does that mean we have? And then, you know, what are the, what, what, what is that going to look like? We've been planning at the elementary level or at the K through eight level to lean on three or four key partners who are responsive to what families have said was super important last year, which is five days full day longer in the summer. So rather than like one week of a partial day where you have to find transportation to get, that was not super helpful for families. And so the reason we're going with the, so it's like Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, Learning Works, and REC is because they are responsive to what our multilingual families in particular had overwhelmingly expressed as feedback about what was challenging with like these episodic camps or even our own partial day program that we ran. At the high school level, we're prioritizing the credit recovery, so the intensives. And that again is sort of trying to do the most essential piece, which is making sure kids have the opportunity to make up their proficiency so that they're getting their ops or their credits. And baked into that will be a language intensive at our two comprehensive high schools that is a reimagining of the language academy. So something like the cultivating community, I don't know what you're referring to, Member Figtor, but that potentially could be baked in there. I'm not sure. But the team's not landing the plane in terms of plans until they're more clear on what the budget is. We're definitely prioritizing students who are IELD and experiencing homelessness are kind of the first wave of prioritization. And so, and then, of course, considering any partners that are especially effective at working with those communities, ideally people who share language and identity. So I'd, I'd say it's all work in progress. So the idea that there's something that's been cut is new to me.
I, I think they were informed that they're not going to receive funding this summer and they do primarily serve students who are living at Motel Six.
Okay, I can follow up on that. Yeah.
And at the, the family shelter.
Okay, thank you.
And just to.
Did that answer all of it?
Yeah. And just to be clear, I'm raising it because I agree with the, the, the direction we're going in and understand the reasoning, but this just seemed inconsistent with what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's why I wanted to raise it specifically.
Okay, thank you.
And, and actually, I have a follow-up question. I'm curious if it's possible to get a, a little bit more granular, the nine hundred thousand dollars for the summer programming, how much of that would be community partners? How much of that would be credit recovery? And then, you know, any other components of that? I don't know if you have that right now or if you could.
Yeah, we've said approximately two hundred and fifty for the high school level and then the remaining for the K through eight. The high school principals, so initially when we thought we were going to have a lot of resource, we were, the, the ninth grade transition team that's been meeting all year as a part of our high school visioning work, has been creating plans for kind of that bridge onboarding, which is like a key component of best practice for the ninth grade transition. So that, you know, their dreams around that have been a little bit reduced. However, principals are feeling like it's possible if they have that two fifty to play with this summer among the schools, they'd like to allocate some of that credit, credit intensive dollars toward funding something for that transition. So that would be in that two fifty. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I am not seeing any more raised hands on Zoom. I'm not seeing any questions in the room. I don't have any more questions. Do we need to vote to adjourn? Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Board Member Opperman, can I have a second? Board Chair Lentz, thank you. All in favor? We were adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As a note, we have a board meeting tomorrow evening. And at the end of that board meeting, we're going to do a board workshop around the budget. And specifically, we'll be talking about the long-term budget strategy, since SRF is a key part of our strategy and understandably,